Good evening. I'd like to call this meeting to order. We have the prayer and the pledge by Councilman Dustin Swir.
Let's bow our head and say the Lord's Prayer. Our Father, who art in heaven, hallowed be thy name. Thy kingdom come; thy will be done, on earth as it is in heaven. Give us to stay our daily bread, and forgive us our trespasses, as we forgive those who trespass against us. Lead us not into temptation, but deliver us from evil. Amen. Our pledge of allegiance to the Father, of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Man, we did it, man. That's awesome.
Mayor Proctor Ricky Gonsalas?
Present.
Councilmember Brooke Morcott?
Here.
Councilmember Marlon Lewis?
Here.
Councilmember David Broussard?
Here.
Councilmember Deidre Ledbetter?
Here.
Councilmember DeeDee Johnson-Reed?
Here.
Councilmember Dustin Swir?
Here.
Item one, public comment. Do we have any cards? We have no cards. So we have no public comment? At this time, I'll remind everyone to lower their phones. Item two A.
Acceptance of the minutes, regular meeting of October 3rd, 2023, which will be published on October 19th, 2023.
I need a motion.
So motion.
I have a motion by Mayor Proctor Ricky Gonsalas, and I had a whole bunch of seconds. I don't know who.
Don't matter.
Latest first.
Latest first? Okay. Councilwoman DeeDee Johnson-Reed. Is there any discussion on our minutes? Hearing seen none? Please vote your machines. Thank you. Item three A.
Special Ordinance Number 2022-2023-31, an ordinance amending the budget to adjust the budget within 5% for fiscal year 2022-2023.
I need a motion to open our public hearing.
Motion.
Motion by Councilwoman Marlon Lewis and a second by Councilwoman DeeDee Johnson-Reed. Is there any public comment on this item? Hearing seen none? I need a motion to close.
So moved.
Rep. Ricky Gonsalas and Councilwoman Brooke Morcott. Thank you. Item four A.
Special Ordinance Number 2022-2023-31, an ordinance amending the budget to adjust the budget within 5% for fiscal year 2022-2023.
I need a motion.
Motion.
Councilwoman DeeDee Johnson-Reed and Councilwoman Marlon Lewis. Is there any discussion on this item? Yes, ma'am.
I was looking down, look up, he's looking at me.
Yes, ma'am, you were ready to go. All of us were.
Yeah, we good.
I was about to say, I don't have anything, but I'm gonna say.
Oh, man. You blew it. Yes, ma'am.
So, um, all the things that actually weren't done this year, that's gonna be carryovers. We're gonna see that in the carryover section of the budget.
Kevin, come on up. Some things we'll have to amend the budget for and bring them back, but.
When we did this adjustment, we had to project what we would spend. So if it was a project that we were getting reimbursed on, we had to adjust for the reimbursement. If there's a difference between what was in the budget and what we actually receive, we will then go in and adjust next year's budget.
Okay. So any project that we would receive funds for that did not get started is gonna be a carryover? Is my question.
We can't receive funds for projects that has not started if it's a reimbursement project. I think all of our projects are reimbursement. In other words, we have to expense it, pay for it, and submit for reimbursement.
Got it. Thank you, Kevin. I appreciate that.
Yeah.
Okay. Just wanna make sure.
So we don't lose anything, but we just have some systems that we have to follow.
Yeah, makes sense. Okay.
And there are gonna be a few things that are gonna slip through the cracks. We've already discussed one that we're gonna have to amend the budget for.
Right.
So that happens after November, and we have to have the new budget to amend the new budget.
Right.
So I'm sure that that housekeeping kinda stuff will be coming.
Yeah. Okay.
Anybody else? And I'd ask you to please vote your machines. Five A.
Resolution Number 23-160, a resolution authorizing the mayor to negotiate and execute an intergovernmental agreement by and between the City of New Iberia and the Iberia Parish School Board relating to the American Rescue Plan Act Project entitled Partnership with IPSB for STEM Festival.
I need a motion.
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 Motion by Councilwoman Marlon Lewis and a second by Councilwoman DeeDee Johnson-Reed. Is there any discussion on this item?
I just want the public to know that the city supports the students, and this is a city actually taking $100,000 of our American Rescue money and supporting the STEM Festival that's gonna be happening at Iberia Parish School Board. So just thank you to all the council members for allocating this money for STEM. It's really important that our kids get exposure to STEM type of curriculum. Thank you.
Anybody else? And I'd ask you to please vote your machines. And this should be enough money to do more than one STEM Festival. It'll be spread out through the schools. And so we met on this, you know, a year ago, maybe two years ago when we started this. So it should add something good for our students and maybe add to some permanent STEM.
Is school board matching or putting up some money or no?
No.
No?
No. The way we approached it, we knew it was needed. We've talked to what's been two administrations.
Right.
So when we first talked about it, we said we would like to take only cities and only schools in the city. We would like to take some money and see this happen because we want them exposed. And hopefully, the school board at some point would put STEM in the schools.
Right.
So we kind of initiated it. So I guess because we initiated, you know, we didn't ask for, hey, we'll put up a hundred. You better.
No, we're just curious.
But I am hopeful that, you know, we planting some seeds and.
Hopefully, it's a good enough idea where they can continue the efforts.
Yes, yes.
So mayor?
Yes, ma'am.
One more comment. So I can tell you that they actually have put up some of their money. They had a STEM Festival. I think it was earlier this year. I was a volunteer, and they had STEM New Orleans come out, and they put on this huge program for the kids. It was amazing. The kids learned so much. I mean, it was, you couldn't even imagine how excited the kids were about learning about all these different things, all these different experiments. So the school board is invested. They have put up money. We're helping them, and we're hoping that they're gonna be able to fund a full program for the students moving forward.
Yes, yes.
And mayor, just for clarification, STEM is science, technology, and.
Engineering in math.
Engineering in math. Thank you.
That's right.
Cool. Then if there's no other discussion, please vote your machines.
Very good.
Oh, they already did? Oh, I'm sorry.
We did?
Yeah, we did.
Oh, I'm sorry. We ended up discussing after.
That's right.
Okay. We do like to discuss. We all know that. Five B. Madam Clerk.
Resolution Number 23-161, a resolution approving change order number five, administrative for the City of New Iberia Asphalt Overlay Project and authorizing the mayor to execute any and all documentation in connection therewith.
I need a motion.
Motion.
Motion by Councilman Dustin Swir and a second by Councilman David Broussard. And we have John here.
Good evening.
Good evening, sir.
So this is an administrative change order to balance out the budgets for the most of the last 16 streets. There are some incomplete items that they haven't finished yet. Those costs are forecasted, so we should be pretty close to the final number. But once they finish those few items on those few streets, we'll have to do one more administrative to balance it completely. But I don't think we're gonna be far off this number, maybe a few thousand dollars, you know, once it's all said and done. In the packet, there's a, it's all line items, so we have to balance each line item, but we have to balance each street. It's a pretty big accounting task to get all this stuff to go through. The back has a summary where you can see the streets kinda on an individual basis. We had some that were on the budget. Some were closed. We had, these are some more of the problematic streets we had in the project, so we did some overages with the construction. But this balances out to basically what we spent.
And as you remember, it's all unit cost. That's how it works. And we did pick the worst streets. So the reason we held, we knew we wouldn't keep it all, but the reason we held a million dollars in reserve because we knew that we would hit, you know, bases that were bad. We would hit, you know, things that were much more deteriorated than we thought because we started with the worst streets. So anyway, I think it was good we did that.
We always tell you 10% contingency because you never know what's gonna find. Just so you know, this project, the construction's about 3.5% over. So I mean, it's not that high of a percentage, you know, considering, you know, when we tell you the whole 10 because we just don't know what we're gonna run into.
Right.
Now, we do have some savings in the inspection and testing because it's not just construction. I mean, it's engineering, test and inspection. But we do have some savings on some of the other tasks, so that brings it down to about 2.3% overrun. So we cut, but the savings in those other two line items, we cut off almost 1%. So this will balance this one out pretty close. It is an adder for 262,000. But that's kinda where that one sits.
Any questions? Questions, comments? Yes, ma'am.
So does that mean that we have, like, no money for striping other streets?
Let's get through item five and item six, and then we'll talk about how much money we have left. But we do still have some work left to do.
Yeah.
Yeah, I know. That's why.
So let us get through that. And I'm not saying there won't be any money left. I didn't wanna do this. We'll talk about that later, too. But I didn't wanna do this till we had the results of the proposition.
Right.
So that makes a big difference in how we approach, I feel anyway, with this smaller balance that's left.
Okay.
So let's get through these items, and then we'll have a discussion about that.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
I have a question. So being that the project is not 100% complete, are we gonna see any other?
You'll have one file.
Change orders come back for liquidated damages?
No, they've been taking them out as they go.
Yeah, we're taking them out. That's the next change order on the agenda.
Yeah, you'll see.
Every month, there's liquidated damages. We reduce them.
Correct.
On the month. But because we enter substantial completion, those liquidated damage, they stop.
All right.
And they have 45 days that we're ticking against right now.
So you won't be coming back to us after this with any more liquidated damages because the project?
Only if they, only if they don't finish within the.
Only if they go past the 45 days.
Okay, that's my exact question.
Right now, they have 22 days. I think today is 22 days left of that 45 days to finish. And there's supposed to be.
But now it's crunch time.
Next week. Oh, yeah. I talked to him today. I'm like, you know, I would love for you to pay me some more money, but I really want you to finish the job.
Correct.
So please come finish.
Yeah.
All right, thank you.
Anybody else on this item? Then I'd ask you to please vote your machines. Thank you. Item five C.
Resolution Number 23-162, a resolution approving change order number six, administrative for the City of New Iberia Asphalt Overlay Project and authorizing the mayor to execute any and all documentation in connection therewith.
I need a motion.
Motion.
Councilwoman DeeDee Johnson-Reed and Councilwoman Marlon Lewis. Tell us about this one.
So this is a deductive change order for the six days in September that we registered before we hit substantial completion. So that paused the liquidated damage days of when you approved that. So this is just to balance out the month and pull that off the payment before they get, you know.
Before they get it, right.
Before they get it. That way, it's just easier financially on the books to do it as we go.
Right.
So they're giving you $1,200 back because they didn't finish on time.
Right.
On top of the 8,400 last, the month previous.
Yes, sir.
So.
We had your hand up?
Yeah. I noticed in the actual change order, you have Pollard Avenue on here, which Pollard Avenue was not done.
Yes.
And I know why. I mean, we have some.
Big sewer work.
Some sewer work that needs to be done, so.
But because it was included in the job, we physically had to remove it from the project.
Okay.
So it's because everything runs, that's on the last change order, because everything runs on a street-by-street basis, and it's one big project, we have to physically remove those quantities because they were included in the overall. Otherwise, we couldn't balance the job at the end.
Okay.
Right, right.
Thank you.
This is as good a time as any because I don't wanna get off of this till we kinda do that. We'll give us a rundown of what we're gonna have left. You and I kinda talked about.
Okay, so this is gonna get you pretty close on the asphalt. The forecast for the concrete streets, we're running heavy, unfortunately. Combination of, one, we tried to be a little too conservative when we estimated, trying to save half panels. And when we get in there, we just can't save them. This drought caused us some issues when we were sawing panels. I mean, literally, we saw the panel, and it would drop three inches with the ground below it was trunk, trunk. I mean, so we do have some issues. Some of the streets came in like right on budget, but we have some, like Ann Street Spencer Loop, some of these other streets are coming in over budget. We're still looking, you know, the 12-5 was the magic number when we started.
Yes.
You know, we're looking at, I'm forecasting, now, this is forecasting everything, both project constructions, the engineering, test and inspection. We're gonna finish out about 12-1 and the 12-2 range. Hopefully, I can get it under the 12-1. You know, I'm forecasting some of these streets are a little on the heavy side. I'm gonna come to you, not next meeting, but probably the meeting after that. They're moving to Doris and Dale Street between Cherokee and Senna Street.
Right.
Tomorrow. They already stayed, got their equipment staged, but they're gonna start. When they finish those two streets, everything on the south side of town and the west side of town will be complete. The only thing they'll have is what's on the inside of the bayou right here left. But I'm gonna come to you and balance all those streets out because we have to get those numbers balanced because we're gonna theoretically run out of contract dollars.
Yep.
If we don't. So, and then we can discuss, you know, I know with the tax pass, but you know, if we wanna finish everything out like it is, you know, this is finishing everything out like it is, you know, if we wanna adjust some things.
Right. I think it's important to finish what we started and to give people what we promised and what we presented. So I'm gonna base it, we're gonna have $350,000 to $400,000 left. Then I'll come back to the council. We'll have a discussion. We do have some roads that it is because of the drought. There's nothing we can do about it. It's not the contractor. We do have some roads that are cracking, and we are gonna need to go and take care of that. Now, that's a brand-new road that if we go and saw cut and fill and do some things, we won't have a maintenance issue. If we don't, we're gonna have an issue. So I've already kinda talked to John about figuring out what that could cost. We know we had talked about some additional striping. We do know we have some other roads, but those are gonna come in the next road project because we're not gonna have enough. And we can't start playing favorites of saying, I'll go fix one block of this one, one block of that one. But I know that now we can make an intelligent decision because we have more money coming. You know, if we didn't, we would have to, you know, there would be a fight over this $350,000, trying to figure out what to do. But I definitely think that we need to take care of the maintenance on the new streets that have popped up with those cracks. We need to deal with that. And then we had all talked more than once that Public Works is never gonna do any striping. That is not their thing. We don't want the liability. If they're an inch off and there's a wreck and a fatality, somebody's gonna come and, you know, find us. So unfortunately, that's the world we live in. So anyway, but let's finish this out, get to the end of this, and do like we always do. That's the fun part. Come back over here, say exactly how much money we have left, and as a group, we'll figure out what we do with it.
This will be after John has actually given us an estimate on the roads that are cracking?
Well, kinda in conjunction. In other words, yeah.
Yeah, we're working on it now.
Yeah, I wanna know that. He's working on it now.
Yeah.
We'll know that. When he comes back with a figure, we'll be able to say, I don't know what it's gonna be. You know, I'm not, whatever it is. If we have 350 left and it's 50, well, now we got 300 to play with, whatever it takes.
Okay.
I would think it would cost more than that.
Yeah.
I mean, just based on what we know, what we have.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
But I think that's, you know, a rational way to approach what's left, especially since we know that, you know, more's coming.
Okay.
Any other questions or comments? And please vote your machines. Thank you. Thank you, ma'am. And I got your information you sent me today. Thank you, and believe me, we'll keep talking.
All good?
Thank you. Okay, five D.
Resolution Number 22-163, approving a 2%.
Six A, huh? Five D.
Yeah, that's, remember, that's an amended.
Hold on, I'm sorry. I didn't get the amended. I'm sorry. Yeah. Yeah, I didn't get that. I got it in my email.
The amended, but, I mean, amended.
Amended. Five D.
I didn't see it.
Understand.
Resolution Number 22-163, approving a 2% general increase for municipal classified employees to become effective November 1st, 2023.
I need a motion.
Well, she's.
Second.
Councilwoman DeeDee Johnson-Reed, Mayor Proctor Ricky Gonsalas. Discussion on this item.
This is all civil service employees?
Yes.
What about directors?
Yeah, well, it's everybody. It's everybody.
Okay.
Yeah, it's always everybody.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
It's not police and fire.
No, well, they have their.
Yeah, it's municipal.
Yeah, yeah.
And is that department heads or just?
Department heads get it, too. Yes, yes.
They're not considered
but it's.
Civil service, right?
Not the department heads.
I didn't think so.
Who's that? No, department heads are not civil service.
Okay. So that's why it says municipal classified employees.
But our police and fire get 2% too.
Yeah, but not by this.
Not by this.
So I'm gonna, I'm gonna bring up the elephant in the room and I know my hands are probably gonna get slapped, but okay. So is there at any point where the council actually gets a raise? I mean, I've been told, I've only been on here three years, but I've been told by other people that the council's salary hasn't changed since nineteen seventy-six. I don't know.
I don't think that's true because I think it changed when the charter was redone. But I'mma call on Jeff and say, Jeff, how does the council get a raise?
Yeah, let me flip this real quick. I'm gonna get raises as soon as I get out?
I mean, I know it's not, it's not up to me, but if it, but if it was, I'd wait till it doesn't leave.
That's what I just said. They're gonna give raises once I get out?
It wouldn't be for us. It would be for the new council.
And it's for the new council.
It's for the new council. It's not for us.
You can't give yourself a raise. No, I mean, it's true.
No, I'm just saying, I mean, part of that is a way to attract people to be council members is to make sure that they kinda are paid competitive to other councils around the state. So, you know, it's something to look at. That's, that's a way to attract people into city government. And I'm talking about the next council, just to be clear.
No, that's fine. We'll see what Jeff comes up with.
Well, the charter says, "A district council member shall be paid compensation of seven hundred dollars per month and two hundred fifty per month car allowance until changed by ordinance." An at-large member shall be paid compensation of eight hundred dollars per month and two hundred fifty dollars per month car allowance until changed by ordinance. So, it's in the charter, but it doesn't take a charter amendment to change it. It can be changed within ordinance.
So, um, I'm not gonna let it be. We were reading, we was playing mind, Jedi mind games just now. Cause we've both been approached with this by several people and we talked about it together. And what really happened was, uh, going over to those LMA conferences and seeing some of the smaller municipalities that I believe don't, don't, uh, have the volume of, um, work, nor the body of work, nor the problems that we have. And I say problems, uh, issues to resolve is a better way. Challenges we face. And if it hadn't been changed in a long time, then, uh, I, I definitely, we had that conversation, uh, it, it's, we're not asking. We're just bringing awareness to that, to that issue. That, that may be one of the things we, we need to look at. And again, we know we can't give a raise to ourselves, so this is for future leadership, uh, for this ci- for this fine city of ours, you know.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
If you don't mind me pointing out something else.
Please do.
The mayor's salary is fixed. There's no increase by ordinance.
Right, and that's fine. I don't want one.
Uh, the mayor's salary is increased by the, by, by the same percentage of increase as the full-time municipal civil service employees.
Right.
So, when they get a raise, he gets a raise.
Yeah, when I get, I get the two percent like they get.
And, and some people who were part of the charter commission, uh, who shall remain nameless, said, "Well, the mayor's salary shouldn't be any more than that because he doesn't have the headache of a police department." Because it's well behind the parish president and other similar positions. But the comment was made at that time. I'm just, I'm just throwing that out there. And with the police department, I think the job changes drastically.
You almost read that change. I remember some of that, Mr. Jeff. Took a lot of time to.
That was the charter commission, two thousand and seven.
For six months.
But back to the original question, the council, yeah, the council's pay can be changed by ordinance, but it needs to be changed for next.
Right, for the next council.
For the next council.
Perhaps we can recruit some people.
Next term or next council?
Next term and council, cause, you know, we're gonna have an election next year, so the group that comes in, in twenty twenty-five.
If, if, if this went down that road, whoever would get elected next time would have the new raise.
So it still can be an incumbent? In other words?
Yeah, it's whoever gets elected. It's not, yeah, right, right.
And I think the Board of Ethics has the, has said that an elected official's interest in his own salary that's set by his vote is not, um, a substantial economic interest under the ethics code. So you can vote yourself a raise.
Okay.
That's not what we're doing.
But, but I mean, the law is the law.
Right.
And that's, that's, I, I find out that people are afraid of the law. But if you abide by it, you don't have to be afraid of it.
Right.
So, um, I, I, I stand with the courageous comment. Y'all just don't know when we.
We were looking at each other. We could read each other's mind.
You know. So, I stand by you with the courageous comment. And again, it's not for this council, reiterate it, not for this council, but for the next council. If, if we go down that, that road, even if we don't do it this term, the next council will be doing it for the following council, so.
Okay.
That's for public information.
And, yes, sir.
And you could find out whether, whether other people are paid. You know, that, if you're seeing.
Yeah.
Something out there at the LMA conferences or whatever that shows the city's behind, I mean, that, that's all public information. So you could, you could compare us to other people.
I, I'd be remiss if I wouldn't say yes, uh. I would do this for free. I, I love, did it for free for a while. Did it for free, believe it or not. Go figure. I would do this for free. Serve, serve, serve my city, you know, elderly children, you know, all of those people that I serve. I would do it for free, you know. But, if small town brown is getting less work and, you know, more money, I just thought I, we, we just thought we'd bring that up.
That's fine.
Yeah, okay.
That's fine. Cool, good discussion. Back to the two percent. Well, I mean, I gotta get us back on track. Do we have any, uh, comments on the two percent or is that, okay. Everybody's good? And I'd ask you to please vote your machines. Thank you, thank you. Faby?
Resolution number twenty-two dash one sixty-four, amending the municipal classified employee salary structure to reflect an increase in the minimum rates.
Okay, do I have a motion?
Motion.
Second. Councilman D. Johnson Reed and Mayor Proton Ricky Gonsal. Any discussion on this item? Which is kind of the same item.
Yeah, same.
It is. Okay, well then, uh, please vote your machines. Thank you. Attorney General six A.
Introduction of ordinance number twenty-two-three dash twenty-seven, and ordinance amending section seventy-four of the Code of Ordinances of the City of New Iberia related to urban camping in the City of New Iberia and setting for public hearing on November seventh, twenty twenty-three.
Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Motion by Councilman David Broussard and a second by Councilman Brooke Markin. Is there any discussion on this side?
Way back.
Mr. Broussard.
I've been watching the news. You catch, you all can watch some other, some other parishes, some other cities, some other states, what they do. In Portland, they have a, they making a law, they don't want tents up and down their main street. We have to find places, if it does come to that, where they out of sight a little bit, but we still take care of them if we can. But we do not want what we see in New York, Washington, all along them beautiful buildings. You know, there's gotta be a place we can help them, but not tear down our infrastructure. That's what they're doing. It's terrible. So that's what we trying to protect right here. I hope that's what we trying to protect. When it does come to us, you know, it's not here yet, we'll be prepared for it, you know, in a nice way. So I hope we find a good medium to give them a place to live, but maybe not down our main highways, our main streets. So that's my, I'm just following what other people, Portland, Oregon, that was the one, the last one I saw, they making a, this what we doing. Keeping it ahead of the game.
I know, everybody's, uh, Councilor Swer.
So just for the record, what are, what is the definition of urban camping? So like, I just wanna, just for the record, if my two little boys wanna camp out in my backyard and they, we live in the urban area, we're not gonna have the PD come and give me a ticket, cause they're camping out, right?
No, sir.
Okay, cool.
Yes, sir.
Now, this talks about public property.
It's public, not private property.
I got you, okay, cool.
So you're.
Not in the park?
No, not in the park, in your backyard.
All right, cool.
And, and we just, I know I'm interrupting, but we, we didn't go to Portland, Oregon. We went to Broussard, Louisiana. We looked at Broussards and another community locally who, who have done this.
They have these same, same ordinances?
Yeah, we pattern ours after.
I think Lainey picked it up, too.
Yeah, she did. After some locals.
She did that.
Anyway. Uh, who, yes, ma'am?
So we do have a place for these people. It's called the homeless shelter.
Yes, ma'am.
The ones who are camping out are the ones who don't wanna follow the homeless shelter rules. They don't wanna get off of drugs or alcohol. Uh, they don't wanna look for places to work. You do have to do those things to be able to stay at the homeless shelter. So I just wanted to put that out there so the public doesn't think that we're being cruel and these people are homeless and we're not giving them a place to be. You have a place to go. You just have to follow certain rules. That's it.
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am.
So, um, if the PD catches someone camping in a place where they're not supposed to be, what's, what are they gonna do? What's the penalty?
Well, the first thing they're gonna do is try to make them go to the shelter, which is the same thing that they do constantly, okay? They talk to them, they tell them about the shelter. Maybe they knew and they don't know. We tell them about the shelter, we tell them where they can go. We've even given some that they were, they made contact and said, "If I could get to Lafayette, I would go to the shelter there." Okay, so, you know, we will do what we have to do to try to get these people help. If they continue to break the law or, and, and right now, it's in our park. Our parks close at dusk. So, uh, we have to move them on some kinda way. Uh, I can't say that they never don't get arrested. Many times, unfortunately, you know, a lot of the issues that we have are drugs, but a lot of, yeah, are alcohol, but a lot of the issues are mental illness.
Right.
So we run across people that do not react in a normal fashion. Let's just leave it at that. So there are times that they do end up being arrested only because they, they've done something that was, you know, totally out of hand. But for the most part, they try to move them along, but they try to offer them help as well. You know, you can go here, you can do this. They tell them the rules, they tell them where they can go. Uh, sometimes it works, sometime it doesn't.
Can we give them rides to whatever shelter that they want to, whether it's Lafayette or here?
We have, we have, we have given them rides, yes. I mean, within reason, but we have said, sure, we'll, we'll, we've brought, uh, we've helped, tried to help make contact with family members. Sometimes that works. Sometimes they don't wanna give us the name or the information because that's maybe what they're running from. But, uh, at times, we've made contact where family has connected with them. You know, we've tried really been creative over the five years the PD's been back and tried a little bit of everything, if you wanna know the truth. Uh, it is a problem that, you know, I just came back from the Mid-City Mayor's Conference. It's a problem for every community. Um, every mayor is, you know, kinda trying to handle it the same way, but, uh, and it, we having some success, but it is a national problem and it is certainly a problem in Acadiana for sure, because, uh, every community, you can see that for yourself. You know, every community that you go to has an increase in homeless population.
The only other thing I will say is that part of that also is, because they're not just, um, people on drugs that are homeless. There are families that are homeless, so we have an affordable housing problem here too as well. So let's not forget that that's part of the solution and we've gotta figure that out some way, somehow. Because some of these people just can't afford some of the rents that are being asked in some of these, these homes today. I'm done.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Yeah, um, I, I, I'm, I'm, I'm piggybacking on Brooke's comments, uh, and she, she's right, uh, we are an empathetic council. Very familiar with drug and alcohol rehabilitation, very familiar. Very familiar with mental health, very familiar. I have a little brother that's diagnosed paranoid schizophrenia. He is in a transitional home right now in Baton Rouge, Louisiana, uh, with much family support. Mental illness. Indeed, you're right, uh, we do have a housing crisis. We learned that at Louisiana Housing Conference and we knew that firsthand. I, I one, I one hundred percent support the, um, outlawing, if you will, of camping in public places because of the aesthetics of it. It's an eyesore. Uh, I hate to say it. We have enough wooded areas down here anyway. You know, it's true. It's, it's true. I mean, uh, it's not, you know, it's an eyesore, uh. But for anybody, and I tell this to everybody, I got a chance to watch a movie years ago and you might think movies and books don't matter in everyday life. If anybody wanna find some empathy, if you don't have that empathy, if you're bored, wanna stop working hard and stop thinking hard and just relax and watch a good movie, watch The Soloist, The Soloist with Jamie Foxx. And he was a Juilliard graduated violinist, played the cello, actually. And he was, um, found by Robert Downey Jr., who was a, um, LA Times reporter who wanted to do a story on him. Story popped so big, he made money off of him, put Jamie Foxx in a penthouse in Beverly Hills. Got there one day and he was in a box inside of his apartment. He was in a cardboard box inside of his apartment and that gave, that gave the public an understanding of this mental illness crisis that we have no control over as a council. So again, uh, I commend Brooke for her comments about, uh, having empathy, uh, for, for the mentally ill. Most of them, I, I tell you, man, most of them are mentally ill. And there's some people that is hereditarily mentally ill and there's some that's drug induced. Either way, if you end up there, you have a lifelong problem and we as a city and as families, as community have a lifelong challenge. So these are one of those laws, I believe, that just will help our town stay beautiful. And also, um, again, the, the aesthetics of it all. I've been to, I'm sure some of us travel here, uh, we all of the traveling age. Los Angeles, Skid Row, seventeen mi- oh, seven million, I don't wanna exaggerate the number, homeless people. I seen Skid Row and I could not believe it, uh, New York, Manhattan, homeless, you know, New Orleans, under the bridge, Houston. I went to Houston and I was like, I didn't know Houston had homeless people, you know, and those are all bigger cities. Uh, and I think all we're trying to do is just not, not have those big city problems in small-town America. And that's who we are, we're small-town America. And we have to respect that as a community. That we have a main street that we're proud of, we have, um, mom and pop shops that we're proud of and, um, it's, it's just, yeah, yeah, parks all over town is just, is one of those things that we have to, um, come together to just keep our town looking up, looking safe. You know, cause not to every, not to, to every, not to every person that walks up on a homeless person, they, they can automatically feel safe. Most people can automatically feel threatened, you know, so I, I get it and, uh, I definitely support it with empathy.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Yeah.
Yes, ma'am.
At the park in my district, uh, there was a homeless lady. And, um, she had, um, clotheslines, she had, um, crock pots.
Like plugged in?
Yeah, she had, uh, her whole little home set up in the, under the little picnic pavilion. It was kinda enclosed. And she was, um, what happened, we could tell that she was mentally ill because she started harassing the kids. Telling them, you know, get out of her yard and things like that. But I did call, uh, NIPD and, uh, when she was there. Cause she would go shopping during the day and stuff and bring stuff back to that place. Uh, so they, they confronted her while she was there. And they gathered her things, cause she said she would wanna go to the shelter. And they took her to the shelter in Lafayette. They were very, very nice to her. And I commend NIPD for that, the way they handled her. Cause it could've gotten out of control, cause she, you know, she was mentally challenged, uh, you know, at, at that point. And, uh, she went along peacefully and that was really a good thing. And, uh, she has not been back. So, um, this is something that we need and our police department can do the job without causing, um, you know, a lot of confusion or bodily injury and that kinda thing. So, I just wanna say that, you know, they doing a really, really good job and continue to do so.
Thank you. I mean, I've seen our officers buy lunches, plate lunches for people. I've seen our officers create flyers on their own that has the information of all the different areas they can go to and where they can get help. I mean, it's, we know it's a problem and we trying to deal with it through community policing, uh, you know. I mean, it's, it's, when it gets past that level, it's past that level. There's nothing they can do. But our officers do a really good job of trying to de-escalate situations and trying to help where they can. So I think that it's not gonna change. This gives them another tool to interact with people, another tool to say, hey, what's going on? Why are you, you know, you can't camp here, but why are you camping here, kinda thing? So I, I think that if we look at it in that positive fashion, th- this could actually, you know, be another, another safe way to interact and another way to maybe stop something before it does get out of control.
Man, if I may, I think when we were trying to bring back the police department, do we have an officer that deals specifically with mental illness? Or officer or officers that can go out on that call and, and intervene? And that, man, I think we need to look into that.
We have officers with more training than others, but I mean, we're a training-based department, so they do have sections in their training on mental illness and those kinda things.
You remember talking about that, right?
Yeah, could. We also have a, uh, this is more for the officers, but we also have a mental health professional.
Right.
That our officers can go talk to. Uh, and there are times that they do talk not only for themselves, there are times that I, I've witnessed that calls were made to say, how do I deal with this? Or how do I deal with that for, you know, some citizen? So, but our officers have some training, but, you know, I can't say that I don't have any officers that are a mental health specialist. I have some that are better at, uh, I mean, it's just personalities. It's just, I have some officers that are much better at handling those things. And I have seen us find those people to connect the dots to say, okay, let's send so-and-so. You know, because something, you just have some people that have that touch. Uh, you have some that will do the job just as well, but maybe not with the finesse. So, uh, we do try to make a, a, a case-by-case, how would I say, like a, you know, a quick analysis of what's going on and try to send the people that we know that are gonna handle it the, the most appropriate way. That doesn't happen all the time, cause if we got hot calls and, and we're spread out through the whole community, we're gonna send whoever we can. Also, as you would think, you know, sometimes a homeless complaint gets trumped, unfortunately, by some violent crime or some, you know, something else with some urgency to it, and then we back up and get to that when we can.
Yeah, cause I know when I, when, when my little brother was out there, we had an officer, he's still with the PD now, Stony. I call him Stony.
That's a good job.
Stony knew me, he knew Cory, he would call me. He got my number, he would call me, he said, "Man, I just saw Cory. I don't think he's in his, in his right place." And he, you know, and then in between time, sometime he run into an officer that didn't know nothing about Cory.
Right.
And he would end up in jail with no medicine, two weeks before the medicine worked. They gave him a sh- it's a mess. So, I, I, I would definitely be advocating for some officer, or officer, a man and a woman with some training. Cause we talked about that. And this is a national push with all of the things that happened in the past where police officers choked out a mental patient and didn't realize that they didn't know how to stop.
Right. We have a good system that we share information. And so basically, uh, cause I see it, every shift can almost tell you the names of all of our homeless people. You know, cause I'll call and say, okay, we got an issue, so-and-so, or, or this is what they look like. And before I finish describing it, they tell me their name. So, the one good thing is, we're not overrun with so many homeless people that our police department doesn't have interaction with them and doesn't know them on a first-name basis. So that helps. And for the most part, you're right, it might take a little while when we hire a new officer to kinda get in the groove. But I do see our shift sharing information, our lieutenant sharing information. And for the most part, uh, we have a, you know, a lot of stability. We can always use a few more officers. We, we always out recruiting. But we have good stability in our ranks, especially in our administrative ranks, that they really do. I mean, there's not a time, I go to my Mon- Monday briefing every Monday and, uh, I told him a story about a, a, a person that I am assuming was homeless, I think, okay? And kinda told the story of what they were doing at five-thirty in the morning, cause I, I, I exercise in the mornings, every morning. And so when I, before I could finish telling the story, they knew his name, they knew, and he was a new one. Uh, you know, not someone that I see all the time. They knew his name, they knew his problem, they knew his issue. So I think there is a good sharing of information there that helps us to run across people that maybe we do know, that maybe we kinda can help. Or know their story, you know what I mean?
I feel like if we don't, if we don't put that in place, we may run into a problem. With antagonizing of, 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 of homeless mentally ill people. Remember one thing else I learned about mental illness? We all have it. We all have it. Anger, brandy out. All of those things, too much of it, the old people used to say, "Too much anything ain't good."
Yeah.
We all have it. Read up on it. We all have some form or another. We're just able to balance and maintain through life better than others. And that's another, uh, the other empathy piece. So try to get some, uh, I think, what is it called? S, what's the SRO? That's Student Resource Officers.
Yes.
They got a name for those officers I'm thinking about. I just can't think of it, uh.
There's a group that does that, too, that they'll go out with the officer if they think it's a mental illness.
And I said that, we all have it, cause you can't have a mentally ill police officer that don't know he mentally ill. Challenge a mentally ill person that's camping on the sidewalk.
Thank you.
I'm done.
Yes, sir.
Last year, you came up with that program about, uh, no donations by Walmart corner, different corners in town, you put the big sign. It's working.
It's helped, it's helped. We have some people that won't sign. We have some people who haven't, and I, I'll put this out there while we add it, cause it is related to our homeless issue. You know, if there are homeless on private property and you post it, you come and you sign an affidavit with the PD and then you see the little sign go up. We furnish the sign, Public Works furnishes the sign. We even put it up. Once they sign the affidavit, it gives us permission to do that. And then the police have a new tool that they can go on that private property and get people off of it. Now, we have some issues and with a couple of big national chains that won't sign. So some of the areas that you see a congregation of homeless people, I, I can't stop them because the company itself, the, the corporation won't sign. We've co- kinda got a few of them to sign. There's some creative ways, but there's a couple of holdouts. But the signs did help. It, it does move people along. Uh, but that is the biggest tool that we found. I just got a new subdivision, uh, subdivision, new developer that bought an existing shopping center. And, uh, well, when I had my desk on the sidewalk, uh, he came to talk to me about other issues, and that's fine. And then the homeless was one. And I said, "Well, why won't you sign the paper?" You know, "If you sign the paper, my guys can post it." And then he goes, "Yeah, I didn't think I wanted to do that. Now I wanna do it." Well, I think he signed the affidavit. Uh, but, and, and, you know, that's something that is another tool in the toolbox to, you know, move people along.
So I could stay on this subject all night. I said I was done. I know why. ACLU. American Civil Liberty Union be one hundred percent, those lawyers be waiting for major corporations like Walmart knows people to, to, uh, to, to go a- to, to go after people.
They will go after them.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
Yes, sir.
Well, we didn't do what Lafayette did.
Yes.
We didn't make the settlement that Lafayette had to pay.
That's right, that's right.
So we went about it a different way.
We did.
But one of the things they're worried about is just antagonizing folks and vandalism and retaliation and stuff like that. I think that's the biggest thing out there.
That's what they tell me.
They're kind of afraid of those folks.
Right. And they do stuff like throw garbage cans down and, yeah, I know, I know. Trash your spot, you have to pick it up in the morning and they do stuff like that. That's what they're worried about.
Break windows.
I'm, I'm, I'm in support of it. I just wanna make sure.
Yeah, no, it's good.
You used a perfect word. This is a tool, but sometimes a tool, you need another tool. You might need a pry bar and a hammer to get it done.
Yes, sir.
Long as we remember, we're dealing with human beings.
Yes, ma'am. Any more discussion? That was a good one, then. I ask you to please vote your machines. Thank you. Good discussion. That's what makes us strong. Seven A.
Discussion regarding the EPA solar for all grant.
Okay, that's my idea. Went to the Midsize City Conference and in the middle of it, they started talking about a, from LMA, a program that they were getting with EPA on. And it would be solar panels that would, would reduce utility bills for low income. So I was like, okay, I'm all over. So, the director of LMA is sitting a few rows behind me and I got this, sorry, Lainey, but I got this crazy little system. So when I go to a conference or I go somewhere, I just say, "Lainey, get ready." And every time I hear something, I immediately text it to her. Now, it's all jumbled up, it's all out. Sometimes a picture, it appears, it's the craziest way to do it. But I don't take notes and I just jam her up where, you know, when I get back, I have to decode it, okay, cause it is crazy. But I remember my points. So I'm telling her, uh, there's only gonna take twelve cities in the state of Louisiana. You get on this now, okay? So she does, as she always does. And so the guy who's the director of LMA, he's like, well, I can see his bald head, you know? So, and then they have a break, he comes and says, "Okay, Freddie," you know, which, I said, "I need to get in on this." So, we, at least are in on the list. It, it could operate two different ways. One way, it's like a ten acre solar bank somewhere in your town. And then the credits that are generated go to low income to reduce their utility bills. Another way is individual houses have solar panels, all right? And all it is, is that same system that CLECO and everybody else has, that you bind back the, the, the power that they're generating. So it seemed like a neat thing. Uh, we, we've had huge discussions over the last couple of years about utility bills. So I got us on the list. I don't know if we're gonna make it, but I don't like to do anything without telling y'all. So we're on the list. We are hoping that, uh, they get the grant, then they disperse it to the twelve communities and we'll go from there. Do I have all the answers yet? No, cause I don't even have all the questions yet, you know? Could that bank be broken up into two or three areas? Cause I don't have a ten acre. I mean, I've been Google Earthing like a bombardier trying to find something. We don't have that magic piece of property that, you know, and it's a grant. We don't have money to go buy the property. So, uh, you know, can we find some small? So uh, you know, can we find some small sections that we could break it up? Um anyway, so as we learn more about it, but but we, at least we in the running. And I wanted y'all to know, cause I really don't do anything without telling all of y'all, that if if this is available and it could help. We do realize that twenty-three percent of our population live below the poverty line. We definitely have people that, you know, could benefit from this. So just thought it was a good idea to, one, give it a shot, and number two, to let you know what I'm doing. So we'll just see where it goes. It's not a promise, it's 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 a shot. And you know, as you know me by now, I take every shot I can. Okay, so.
It's like, it sounds like a good solution for some of the problems we're faced with.
It could help. Cool. Uh we'll move on to councilman's remarks, and I'll start on Brookside.
Okay, so as we all know, the road tax pass, which is great, so thank you to the public, everyone who went out and voted, I saw. About thirty-five-ish percent of Iberia Parish went out and voted. Um also, this is our last meeting before Halloween. So Trick or Treat is on the thirty-first of October from six to eight PM. Just want to throw that out there, everyone likes to ask, when is Trick or Treat? So um it's on Halloween night, and that's all I have for tonight.
Thank you.
Well, Mayor, I wanna congratulate everybody that ran number one for an office statewide, um district-wide. Uh congratulations, I'm looking forward to working with whomever. Uh you know, remember you gotta be a. You know, governor, gotta be governor for all people, state senate gotta be gov- state senate for all people. And just remember, uh, you know. You know, when you swear to to the people, remember who the people are. Uh but again, putting yourself up for, running for an office, that's courageous. So, you know, I commend those people and I ca- congratulate those people. Also, there's another very important event uh on October the twentieth. And I wanna tell myself, happy birthday. On October the twentieth. I'll be fifty-three years old, and I've done the work to get to fifty-three years old. Uh I'm gonna say, good Lord, say the same, happy birthday to me. That's all.
Mr. Russell.
Again, the ones that got elected, most of our state delegation be on a first-name basis with them. That's based on some projects we have in Iberia Parish, where they can push it along. And uh congratulations to the one that got in, and uh Mr. Mayor, we can all work together.
I'm good. You're good? Okay.
Uh Neighborhood Watch will be Thursday at six o'clock at the Slimeum. Uh everybody come on out. Last month when we had it, um it was the Sugar Cane Festival, so that kinda threw things off a bit. But um we're back in the swing of Neighborhood Watch, so come on out and and join us. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am.
Okay, I just wanna remind everybody that we are having a mobile market in Weston Park on Friday, November tenth. From ten AM to two, to twelve PM. I thought it was a little later than that, so it's supposed to be eleven AM to two, I think those times are wrong. Um it's in the Weston Park, they're gonna have lots of fresh vegetables, lots of fresh fruit. If you are currently receiving EBT, you can use your EBT card to come and buy it, the 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 vegetables and stuff are dirt cheap. If you don't have EBT, from what I'm told, if you come with fifteen dollars, you're gonna go home with bags of of stuff. So please come out. Um there's also gonna be um uh health and wellness kind of uh event going on at the same time, so they'll do some checks. You know, blood pressure, they'll do diabetes, different types of screenings. And uh there's also gonna have someone out there who's gonna be able to do some, um, well, talk about nutrition, even do some um. Food sampling, like you'll be able, they'll do some quick little recipes and teach you how to cook that food. And then let you taste it so that, you know, when you go home, you know what to do with those vegetables. And so we we hope that everybody comes out, this is, you know, because the Weston has a food desert in that area. And so we're trying to make sure that they have access to these, you know, fresh vegetables and fresh uh fruit. But it's for the entire city, so please, especially if you know an elderly person, um this is a great way for them to get some vegetables and some fruit. Without having to pay a fortune, because we all know that inflation has really risk, you know, raised the prices on on vegetables. Um and and a lot of people can't afford it, so this is a great opportunity for them to come out and get um some food for cheap. And then for the people, I wanna say congratulations to everybody who won the race, but for the people who actually didn't win. Obviously, you have a desire to be a public servant, so I'm gonna ask that you do not disconnect. Maybe the race is over and maybe you didn't win, but it's still an opportunity for you to be involved. So help us to continue making our community better by staying connected to us and giving us your ideas and supporting some of the things we do. Um we're always open to hearing feedback, and anybody who would put their name and a hat to run, um you guys must have great ideas. So don't keep them to yourself, share them with us, and we'll do our best to implement them until you have the opportunity to run again. And possibly get that seat. Thank you.
Sir.
Yeah, uh this past weekend was Gumbo Cookoff, it was awesome weather, um great music. I was actually pleased to be able to judge on Sunday, so I was able to get my little gumbo fixed in for a little while. It couldn't have been a a better success, I I wanna thank the chamber staff for doing what they do, um to really get the people in. In fact, I was, it was crazy, we were talking about conventions in LMA and stuff like that, I met the mayor of Provinsole, Louisiana, um up there. He actually texted me Thursday evening saying he was in town, cause he was at another conference, and he stayed in Iberia. For two evenings, canned out downtown, and and just to see what it was all about, and he had a real good time. And uh and that's one way we connect, we were able to connect with other public servants throughout the state. And it was just crazy how out of the blue he texts us on a, on a Thursday evening, I didn't even realize, we still exchanged numbers. And he stayed for the weekend, he really enjoyed it. So uh, but yeah, it was a great weekend, uh election. The voter turnout was somewhat a little low, but uh, you know, it is what it is. And Marlo, you're right, you know, we have representatives that may, we may not have been for, but they are gonna, they are our voice. And uh so like Mr. Davis said as well, just keep a name basis with them and hopefully we can keep pushing forward. So that's it for tonight, thank you.
One more thing?
Yes, ma'am.
Uh this weekend is uh St. Edward's annual fair. I'd be remiss if I I didn't remind everybody about it. Come on out and and join us on on Friday. Selling fish dinners, um so you can purchase them, it'll be at the Family Life Center in the back. So um after that, at night, Friday night, Super Bingo. And on Saturday, twelve o'clock is the parade, it's gonna pass down Persian Street from the Boys and Girls Club. Uh to Hopkins Street and to Robinson and back to to the church. So uh and after that, the fair is gonna open up. Um the mass, the fair mass will be at three o'clock instead of four. So um should be EJ the DJ's gonna be there, and also um Nate and uh Zadiko.
Little Nate.
Yeah, Little Nate and uh Zadiko, big time, is it this? Yes. So uh come on out and join us and have a great time, food fun, and they will be selling some adult beverages too. So just to uh have a, come on out and have a, en- enjoy family activity. Thank you.
Thank you.
One quick comment, I I wanna thank um the ladies, um on Saturday, they, well, it was Sunday, they did this breast cancer awareness walk. It was a great turnout, and uh what I like about it, uh Sunday was a beautiful day, they started right after the Gumbo Cookoff. So you were able to attend both of them, and they did an awesome job. I know the Toby family was involved, Spearhead, and then a few other fam- I don't wanna call names, but I know the Toby family was involved. And they did a wonderful job, uh I wanted to thank them for putting that on. Uh it's an annual event, and it's in October, I don't know if it's always on the um. I forgot to announce it last week, but I wanna thank them for putting it out, and they had a good turnout.
Good. I got a few tonight.
Could smell the gumbo all the way across town Sunday morning, welcome to smell.
That's good, sir. On the road tax, I wanna thank each and every one of you for your help, because nobody did this by themselves. Uh same thing to our voters and to the private PAC that was put together, that put money up to help us get the word out. Um you know, it's exciting that we got this pulled off so that we have millions more dollars worth of work. I am already working with the bonding company, with our engineers, and putting a plan together. Um it's gonna take a little while, cause I already, people are asking me, so we'll have some resolutions coming fairly soon. Our ordinances to pay off the existing millage, that will be first. Once we do that, the other millage will kick in, we take care of that. Uh then Jason Akers can start putting a package together so that we can start looking at uh bonding possibilities. I'm already talking to him about interest rates and kinda getting a feel for the market. Uh as you know, that we had already pri- prioritized all of our streets. So John will just be picking up with the list, and we'll do the same thing we did, was, you know, the worst left down. Um not positive how much money we'll have yet, because interest rates have have changed, so Jason will fill that piece in. We'll have some decisions to make, I'll be coming to you with uh some interesting choices. Um at the same time, I am, have been for a long time, we're gonna look at maybe some LGAP money this go around, I'll be bringing you that. And I'm thinking about buying a hot patch uh machine that we can change the way we do potholes, because many, many people. Think our road program is the temporary pothole patching. We didn't get a lot of credit, that the twelve point five million we spent on roads, it really did, you know, good engineered road repairs. Uh people were kinda mixed up with that and and consider that, that that temporary pothole patching, but I'm, I'm. I apologize. But that's something that we do need to change, I need something that is a a better system. So you'll see that coming, but all that's gonna, you know, come over the next few months. And once the packages are ready from the end, the engineers need about six months from the time I hit the go button with them in a contract. So I'm projecting, and this is very early, that it would be the summer of next year, you know, July or August, by the time the road program would kick back up again. So anyway, but just to kinda tell you, the steps are coming, I'll bring it all here like I always do. Uh yes, ma'am.
Can you talk about the Dory project, that uh donations to complete?
Yeah, I will. Uh that's on my list.
Okay.
Um let's see, we have uh a bunch of events coming, I wanted to talk about the road tax, I got one more big issue. Uh as you all know, I have continued to negotiate with Cleco, I am still working through that. I am changing the process to where we would be bringing a document, we would not bake the cake at the council meeting. Because I think in the end, in retrospect, we thought we had a deal. Uh and then when we got the wording, it it was not exactly like what we wanted, and as you know, I had to veto it. But uh that will be coming back, we are working through that, and I have been working on that really since the last one, you know, didn't work out. So we'll try again with that, but I wanted you to know that that's coming. Um we have, uh let me try to get all of our events, October twenty-eighth, the Halloween parade is at four o'clock. Uh let's see, November eleventh, we have a new festival, that's a Bayou Tesh boat, Bayou Tesh Fest. And it's gonna be boats and cars, so we'll have antique boats in the bayou and cars, and for this first year, it'll happen in Bully Plaza and Felicity's Landing. As it grows, we'll be able to go to each location. Uh and I hope everybody noticed, uh I put the picture on Facebook, there was about eight boats that tied up. And you, people came to the Gumbo Cookoff by boat. So I thought that was really neat. Our first uh tenant in the Back of City Hall is is due to leave, so he he kinda stayed a little longer, but he was my first one. So now we're kinda saying, okay dude, it's time to move on. Uh he'll be leaving. Uh we had some inquiries about some other people coming, so I I think slowly but surely, this is gonna really come together. Um the Dory property donation is finished, and uh not only the property, but the million-dollar check is now in the bank. Uh so we'll move on to the next phase. We are talking, uh as some of the council members know, cause we're working on it. We are talking about some possible tenants and possible development already, so more as that kinda fleshes out. Um let's see, oh, and I get dunked at the uh, they have a dunking booth at the St. Edward's, and there's a whole list of us. From Marcus to Trey Hike to me, to just a a whole litany of people who they suckered into saying, yeah. So I think if, you know, if you hate me, come at two, I think it's two-thirty is my time, come at two-thirty and spend some money and, you know, dunk me. I mean, the money goes to a good cause, and that's about it.
Oh, oh.
Yes, ma'am.
And the Sunday, our barbecue dinners, and uh after mass on Sunday, uh the raffle. Everybody buys the raffle tickets, they're gonna pull, you know, they're gonna announce the raffle winners uh right after uh mass on Sunday. So get your barbecue dinners and stay for the announcing of the raffle winners, and that'll be the end of the fair.
And I I get, we just checked, I get I get wet at two-thirty-five.
Sunday or Saturday?
On Saturday.
Okay.
Two-thirty-five. Great, with that, I need a motion to adjourn. Thank y'all.